Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, Monday, December 7th, 2015. We'll start off by Chief, who you will direct us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval for the minutes of Monday, November 16th, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Do we have any public comment tonight?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would just like to congratulate the Mashpee Falcons on their wonderful success this weekend, on a job well done, and for putting us on the map.
And how it was quite impressive seeing it on national TV last night.
It was, wasn't it?
It was better than the game.
Yeah.
Lots of buzz.
Okay, acceptance of the secondary salt bid.
How does compared to the primary contract?
This was the original little bid, and then there was a problem with the specifications.
So they come in back at the same, roughly the same price?
Yes, to my knowledge.
So we're gonna use them?
As a secondary to the original bid that you've already approved.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion, we award contract to Saltine Warrior, amount of $68.93 per ton. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Public hearing, renewal annual licenses. Carol, would you like to run these through?
The Board of Selectmen, acting as a licensing authority for the town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on 2016 annual liquor licenses and 2016 annual entertainment license renewals in the town of Mashpee. Said hearing will be conducted on Monday, December 7th, 2015, at 6:40 in the Wacoit Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, Great Neck North, Mashpee, Mass.
We'll take these one category at a time. Carol, do you want to?
Package store license, all alcohol, Andy's Market, The Barn, Best Buy Beverage, Inc., Liberty Liquors, South Cape Wine and Spirits.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we do the?
Do I do individuals?
Do the hearing, and then close the hearing, and then do the votes?
Right, we gotta close the hearing, and then do the votes.
Oh, excuse me.
It's a public hearing, that's right.
Package store license, wine and malt, Mashpee Mart, Commons Convenience, annual all liquor, alcohol restaurant, Asia, Blue, Bobby Burns, Cafe Trivi, Estrella, finally Dino's, The Lanes, 99 Restaurant, New Seaberry Country Club, Al Calabra, Quashnet Valley Country Club, Sienna, Sopranos, Wicked.
Carol, you skipped over Burrito Bistro Mashpee.
Oh, no, it's, I haven't finished.
Right here.
It's on the next one.
You're on the different page than I am.
Yeah. It's on the next one.
It shows on the next one here, too.
Yeah, it's on the next one.
Oh, this, yeah, there's two or three massive ones.
Bangkok Thai Cuisine, Burrito Bistro Mashpee, and Zoe's. Annual all liquor, inholder, Poppin' Esset Inn, and Zachary's Pub. Annual all liquor commercial club license, Willow Bend Country Club. General on premise, wine and malt, Artfully Yours. All liquor license holders are current regarding tax payments. The police chief has indicated no violations to this date. All liquor license holders have been inspected and passed by the building, health, and fire departments with the following exceptions. Artfully Yours's emergency lighting was not.
We have been informed that that has been taken care of.
Okay. All liquor license holders have submitted proof of workman's comp insurance as mandated by the state, as well as proof of liquor liability insurance as required. Said, should you have any questions, please free to call.
Do we have any discussion on any of these licenses?
I'll just make the general comment. I asked the, I asked for a run of police calls to all of our liquor licenses, just to see if anything jumped out. And I would say, as a general rule, vast majority of our license holders do a really good job, have very minor police calls to be concerned with. Couple that might have a little bit more than others, associated with the nature of the business, but I think for the most part, that review, to my mind, showed that everybody's, seems to be doing a pretty good job.
Can I agree?
I make a motion.
Wait a minute, anyone in the public have any discussion on any of these liquor licenses? Seeing none.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Now go down each one, we'll vote each category.
Package store, all alcohol, Andy's Market, The Barn, Best Buy Beverage, Liberty Liquors, South Cape Wine and Spirits.
Do I have a motion on these? Package store, do I have a second?
Second, whoever, whoever you got in the sub log.
All those, all those in favor?
You got it.
Yes.
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 Package store wine and malt, Mashpee Mart, Commons Convenience.
I'll make a motion, we approve the annual licenses.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Restaurant, all alcohol and entertainment, Asia's Place, Blue, Bobby Burns, Burrito Bistro Mashpee, Cafe Trivi, Estrella, finally Dino's, The Lanes, 99 Restaurant, New Seaberry Country Club, Al Calabra, Quashnet Valley Country Club, Sienna, Sopranos, and Wicked.
Motion?
Make a motion, we approve their annual license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Restaurant, wine and malt, Bangkok Thai Cuisine, and Zoe's.
Motion?
So moved, do we approve the annual license?
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Inholder, all alcohol, Poppin' Esset Inn, and Zachary's Pub.
Motion?
Motion to approve all alcohol inholders license.
Have a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes on Poppin' Esset, no on Zachary's.
Go ahead.
Commercial club, all alcohol, Willow Bend Country Club. Motion?
Yes, motion to accept commercial club license.
Second?
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 General on premise, wine and malt, Artfully Yours. Motion?
Yep, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Very good.
That was good.
We have to sign them tonight, right?
Yes, I have them here.
We have them. Yeah. All right, old business, review and approval of tribal memorandum of understanding.
We do have another hearing at 6:45. Yeah, you want me to do that one?
This one, John.
It's the closure.
I don't even know.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as a licensed authority for the town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the request of Oak and Amber, Inc., doing business as Al Calabra Den, Callahan Manager, to close for deep cleaning of the premises and retaining staff effective immediately, and to reopen on March 1st, 2016. Said hearing will be held in the Wacoit Room at Mashpee Town Hall on December 7th, at 6:45.
Any discussion? Except.
We have him here.
Come on up to, come up to the, no one's gonna have any questions, so you can just give a brief.
Well, you pretty much already summed it up, I mean, what she said, couldn't really change much from what she said.
Do I have a motion, then?
No, I have to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Now, do I have a motion?
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, I make a motion to accept the temporary closure.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, see you in the spring.
All right, now we're in the whole business, review and approval of tribal memorandum of understanding. Chief, do you want to bring us up to date on this?
Yes, after many weeks of discussions and negotiations through tribal legal council and town council, the memorandum of understanding that is before the board is recommended for preliminary approval. I would just caution you that this has not been vetted nor approved by the tribal council yet. It is my understanding that they meet on Wednesday. There may be revisions and/or amendments at that particular time, but the MOU that is before you is something that councils are comfortable with, and this has been looked at very carefully, and the terms and conditions, I believe, satisfy both parties at this particular time.
And the attorneys have read this?
They wrote it.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I think we have a question.
Oh, excuse me.
For discussion, I just wanted to.
You want to come up to a mic, please? Introduce yourself, and then.
Held in the tribes' legal council, and I just wanted to sort of echo what the town manager had stated, that I think the, both parties have vetted, is just that the tribal council is meeting on Wednesday of this week, and so, so there may possibly be additional amendments to it, and just kind of give you that sort of caution, just because they may come back with additional changes, just to apprise you of that situation, but it is going before full tribal council on Wednesday.
All right, this basically is saying we're very much in favor of this one way, and would you align with us to this changes, they gotta come back and start again.
I think it's prudent for us to be, to have this approved, so that, you know, in the event there is some recurrence that requires the assistance of the police department on tribal lands, that there's a pathway, even if you're looking for amendment, or the council itself comes back to amendments, seem to be the wise way to do it, instead of losing another two weeks, would be to approve this and then enter into a discussion about what tweaks you'd need for it, since I would hope that this, any changes that the council would look for would fall fairly closely in line with the scope and nature of this agreement. But I think we leave ourselves, both ends, vulnerable, not having something in place that makes it clear what the roles and responsibilities are, so that we don't have an incident we can't respond to.
Okay, and I, and I think it's just matter, you know, just again, to reiterate, that council's gonna meet again on Wednesday, at their next regular scheduled meeting, and they're gonna take it upon their agenda, but there's possibly some changes that may be recommended, but we don't know that until.
That's their choice.
I think the sentiment conveyed to them would be that we see an overriding public interest in having something in place, and we've worked cooperatively thus far, if there are changes, I think the spirit would be that we would make such changes, but that we're better off having an agreement in place sooner rather than later.
And I think the general consensus with the, with the tribe is actually if there would, if the town would possibly wait, but, but I know that, you know, because the council meeting is on Wednesday, and they would make their decision by Wednesday.
Well, that's the tribal council, we will do our own thing, just like they will.
Exactly.
Do I have a motion?
And if I could just.
Yeah, actually, I did have another question.
Go ahead.
So I'm assuming, because it's, we still have two days between now and then, God forbid, something was to happen.
Nothing happens until they sign.
Nothing is in effect until the tribal council signs off, but what I will add, that I think is already clear, this has been an ongoing process with tribal council, not this gentleman, but Washington attorneys, on both the town's part and the tribal council's part, and this has been extensively negotiated, to use the words of Attorney Costello in an earlier conversation. So we've tried to ensure that the tribes' interests are what they need to be, and our interests are what they need to be, and this is a document that I am comfortable putting before you, especially after speaking through a conference call with both councils.
So as far as our police and fire, is it clear with them, as far as what the response would be?
They have already been instructed in terms of their limitations, and that will not change until this is ratified or takes effect, and until the tribal council executes this, this does not take effect.
We've been exposed since the day that lands on the trust.
Yes.
We're still, if you're asking, we still exposed, yes.
So they know the rules of engagement, whatever they are now.
There isn't any.
So it's, okay.
Even if we sign this, they, they have to accept, they have to sign it, so there's no, this is.
Still limbo.
It's been, it's been gone over repeatedly, and back and forth, I'm very comfortable signing this tonight, and I think.
Could I have a motion from you, then, please?
Yeah, I will, you can make that a motion, motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Now we'll see what happens from there.
New business?
Where did I just lose my?
Approval of special events?
Special events committee?
Oh, yeah. Appointment of Special Events Committee Rodney Collins.
Has he been vetted?
Have I been vetted?
I make a motion to approve Rodney Collins to the Special Events Committee.
And can we add, or my designee?
Yes. Want to amend your motion on that?
I make a motion to appoint Special Events Committee Rodney Collins with his designee as Tom Mayo.
No, do you want?
Or my designee.
Or his designee.
Which is likely to be Tom Mayo.
I second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, approval of Historic District Commission Bradford Pitsley.
I make a motion, we appoint Bradford Pitsley to the Historic District Commission.
I second it.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Okay, approval of Special Events Application in the Mashpee Holiday Parade, December 12th, next Saturday evening. This is their event certificate. Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Approval of Special Events Application Hero Triathlon on June 19th, 2016. This is the same triathlon that's been on for the last few years, they've done such a great job, and been a.
This is our third one.
You want to defend your title, John?
No, yeah, yeah, sure.
I make a motion to approve the application for Hero Triathlon on June 19th, 2016.
Second.
All right, this one here, I'm gonna have Andrew explain.
All in favor? Yes, yes, yes.
Discussion of Available Funds Regarding Intermunicipal Agreement and Shared Responsibility for Nutrient Cleanup of Wacoit and Poppin' Esset Bayes.
Okay, we have a request from the town of Falmouth to enter into a partnership with, between them and the county and us. Our recently approved wastewater management plan identifies a question that requires a little bit more analysis regarding the impact of restrictions on flushing in the Muteus River. Basically, the question is, the sholing, basically sand filling up in the place where the river enters the bay, restricting tidal exchange, and if it is, it's holding nitrogen back in the river, and that's causing some of the water quality problems in that river. And if that is in fact the case, then we could remedy that sholing, increase the flushing in that river, and not have to manage some portion of the nitrogen through septic systems further up in that watershed. The report suggests, our report suggests that, because that portion of the river is actually in Falmouth, that Falmouth do that work, the reality is that it would, if we find that that's in fact the case, it'll save Falmouth money, it'll save us money. So Falmouth went to the county through the Water Protection Collaborative, and requested that the county participate in the funding. Water Protection Collaborative voted at its last month's meeting to offer half the cost of the study, on the condition that each town pick up a quarter of the remainder, or half, you know, split the half. So the request is now to enter into an agreement with Falmouth and Barnstable County to cover Mashpee's $10,500 share of a $42,000 study, that would potentially save us many hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Is this something, Andy, that has to go before town meeting?
No.
It already has.
It already has, the article that we passed at October town meeting.
Is that the one?
Has money, has language in it that would allow for this type of intermunicipal analysis and study. So basically.
So the money is available?
The money's available, and basically, you know, we're getting an answer to a question that's identified in our plan for 25 cents on the dollar, the cost of the study. And then in addition, the Mashpee Environmental Coalition voted to contribute $500 towards Mashpee's $10,500 share, and a friend, Citizens for Preservation of Wacoit Bay are paying a portion of Falmouth's share.
Now, do you need a vote on this tonight?
The vote would be to agree to enter into a partnership, intermunicipal agreement with Barnstable, or Barnstable County and, and county Falmouth for this purpose.
Andy, can I ask you, does this, is this where it starts and ends, with just the dredging of this inlet, or is this gonna be the start of an agreement between the two, as how we're gonna treat the Wacoit Bay, because that's been an issue for a long time.
I think this, this would be the first time that we had a formal agreement between the two towns to cooperate towards the management of Wacoit Bay. It's, it would be the first, it would be a small step forward on, in a very lengthy process, but it's a good step, as Eric Turk in his letter indicates, for a formal partnership between the two towns, it's a positive from that perspective.
Yeah, I see the benefit of the, the tidal flow, clearly, it makes all the sense in the world, but I know that the sewer commission was stuck with how to treat the bay, because it was on the, it was at the end of the list of Falmouth.
You're, Tom, you're absolutely right, that the, the sequencing of our work on Wacoit Bay, and the sequencing of Falmouth's work on Wacoit Bay are way out of sync. I was wondering if there's a negotiation. Only 30th, this is the beginnings, this will start us off on a good part, I mean, the good part is that for the two ponds, Hamlin's and Jayhoo Pond, the money we appropriated at October town meeting for the shellfish, will allow us to begin the process of meeting the water quality standard within those two ponds, and Great and Little Rivers that feed them. What we can't do without Falmouth is get the main station in Wacoit Bay back to standard. So that the inland stuff, we can handle ourselves, we don't, if you will, we don't need Falmouth's cooperation, so, but, you know, the bay itself, the larger bay can't be achieved, water quality goals can't be achieved unless we're cooperating in a more formal way.
We have such a small place, a small pot of the bay.
Right, we're such a small portion of the load.
But that's what I'm saying, I'm looking at it as, well, they improved the navigational waterways in, in Falmouth, and, and yet we, I, I'm all about that for the tidal flush, I think it's great, but I just, I wish we could use this to get them to come up to an agreement.
The way we're planning on sequencing the agreements, we're starting with the intermunicipal agreement with Barnstable and Sandwich on Poppin' Esset, we're gonna do that one first, and then we're gonna move to the one with Falmouth.
It's a start.
This is a start.
Okay.
But that'll be, that'll be a hard discussion.
Yep, I'm sure.
It will be a very hard discussion.
You're right.
And I just wanted to point out that the appropriation was authorized at the October town meeting, and had it not been, then we wouldn't have the funds available.
All right, I take it our vote, our motion will be to enter into a partnership with Falmouth in water management.
Yes.
Quality water.
The intermunicipal.
For the Muteus Study.
Yeah, motion, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 I'm gonna abstain, simply because my, or the organization for which I work, the Water Protection Collaborative, is the source of the funds for the match, and I abstain from involvement on, on the county side, and I'm gonna do so here, just to avoid any appearance of conflict.
Okay.
Do I name names of who's gonna name you?
I don't know what, I don't know what persona will be adopted for that purpose.
Okay, get the budget?
Yeah, we have it on the budget, is this just to tell us when the budget's gonna be, or?
Uh, yes.
This usually isn't on the agenda.
The schedule is being distributed, and essentially, all of the various departments are gonna be reviewed from Tuesday, December 8th, to Thursday, December 17th. That will be the preliminary review of the municipal budget, and I would ask that if you wanna attend, you're more than welcome, as long as we don't have a quorum, and I would certainly welcome the respective liaison to each department to attend, either from the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee also has received this, and myself, the Assistant Manager, and the Finance Director will be reviewing all of the departments' submittals in the proposed form.
Where were these meetings, held here?
Across from our office.
Okay, I'll see tomorrow morning, School Committee.
And if the board has any guidance, direction, or anything that they would like to add.
Don't spend our money.
Well, I think one of the things, you know, I'd like to see us factor into this budget cycle, is looking at the potential for beginning to put aside a reserve to fund capital infrastructure. You know, we've got a number of debt obligations that are expiring, and in the, in the reason in the near future, they're built into our levy, we have future capital needs, and I would hate to see the money that has been built into the budget structure, that's paying debt service, get, as that debt service goes away, start to go into daily operations, because then, when we go back to do additional capital, we have to ask people to go above and beyond the levy that we're correcting, that we're collecting now. So I'd like to see us maintain some discipline, and set aside the debt service for future debt, you know, our road bonds expiring soon, got some wastewater needs, got some capital improvements on facilities, and so, you know, I think we can sort of provide some stability in the tax rate for the electorate if we, if we exercise some discipline in setting up a reserve fund. So that's something I've talked to the manager about, sort of building into some of his thoughts going forward, so that we don't have tax shock as we run into some future capital needs.
John, you'll like.
The other thing we have, that I believe we put $100,000 into it the year before last, whatnot, is it's hanging over, everyone, every town's head is unfunded debt.
Unfunded liability, yeah.
And.
Employee liability.
We had put $150,000.
We put $150,000 in because we were in good shape, so anytime we find us offering a check, we should, $150,000, this number is in the millions.
And obviously, this is not the capital improvement program review, which will be submitted, as well as reviewed later, in January and February, but at the same time, the two are connected, as Selectmen clearly pointed out.
Well, we're far enough along in the sewer thing, I would think we'd stop putting figures in the capital improvement.
We know, yes, I mean, we, we do know, and we, the Sewer Commission put in the capital plan last year, projections based upon the anticipated plan, but now we have some, we have a little bit more certainty.
Okay, good.
And I just think, you know, the barman heads are smart, you know, people know, you know, when debt's coming off the books, and all of a sudden. know, when debt's coming off the books, and all of a sudden, you know, it gives the appearance that that makes money available. And I just think, you know, to the extent we just hold our debt service allocation constant, we avoid creating the perception among the departments that there's money up for grabs, because it's not there.
School comes off debt service, I believe, in a year, and at the same time, there is a window project at one of the schools that's going to be very costly. There is the possibility of a facility addition at DPW that has been discussed, and then, of course, there's the road maintenance plan that you folks are aware of, that is also going to be a pretty hefty--
I think what Andy's talking about, though, is a big elephant in the room, which is a sewer that could be anywhere from, hopefully, hopefully 200 million to a half a billion.
Well, the first five-year cycle, if we're really successful on the shellfishing side, we're still looking at, you know, $46 million capital investment in years four and five. So, you know, the extent we can start to cushion that, that tax shock, you know, we give some, we have some flexibility. And we also, you know, last, what, last summer, you know, adopted a fairly aggressive road maintenance program, try and stay ahead of the need to reconstruct, and that's a level of commitment to road maintenance that exceeds anything that we've been doing in the last little while, because it went beyond just what was done in the road bond. The road bond was for reconstruction. This is really for maintenance. So, you know, there's some things out there, and I just, you know, as you work through your assessment of these, keeping those issues sort of on the front burner, so we can come up with a long-term operating plan that provides some stability to people and keeps the tax rate at a reasonable rate, given what we've got going on, you know, because some of those debts that come off are outside two and a half, and so those, that debt money can't be repurposed. Those bonds were temporary, and the excess levy collections associated with them were temporarily expired with the bond. But some of that was inside two and a half, and gives us a little bit more flexibility. So it's, you know, it's the kind of thing that if you don't make conscious decisions, that, that money finds its way into people's operating budgets and not into other capital purposes.
Yeah. I think it's always in the best interest of the town and the administrator to not spend any money if you don't have to.
Piscally responsible.
Exactly. It's like, yeah, we can't do that, so.
Anyone have anything on communications or correspondence?
Actually, great school committee meeting.
Okay, we're going to liaison report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's--
So we actually had a demonstration of their tech class, and four students got up and showed their project, and it was, you got to put on the, and I'm not going to call it whatever it was, but it's the viewers, and you put it on, it's virtual reality type of glasses, and it was just an amazing job. I mean, and all four kids got up and spoke about their, represented their project, and it was great, and everybody got to get up and experiment, and see what they're doing, and they're like state of the art over there. And they also released some of the scores from the new scoring program that they use now. It's not the old--
Park.
Huh?
Park.
Park. And the seventh and, I believe, the eighth grade scores were dramatic improvement. And there was a lot of ups and downs, and overall, junior and senior schools did pretty well. But again, all the results are still coming, coming out, if you will, but very good school committee meeting.
Tom, anything liaisons?
Liaison, yes. On the, made me think about it actually, was the base, the wastewater treatment, they're waiting for an evaluation, a feasibility on that. I was there, I think it was last week, and there was no update on that, and I made them aware that we're kind of waiting on that information, so see if we can move forward, and so asked them if they could push that, bring us some information at the next meeting. So that one's there. And now that I hooked up on that, there was another one I was going to mention, and I didn't write it down.
Affordable housing.
Oh, the affordable housing. The affordable housing, we had done the feasibility study, preliminary feasibility study on the 950 Falmouth Road, and it looked favorable, so they were going to move forward to the next stage, which would be a final feasibility and give us some direction, and Tom was there, and he did a great job, so who knows where it'll run, but it looks as though it will sustain some affordable housing for us. Up to 63 bedrooms, I believe it was.
On a related matter, there was a letter on the correspondence with affordable housing related, there was a letter in our boxes last week from the Housing Authority pertaining to the article for CPC funds for short-term financial assistance in affordable housing, which seemed to indicate a preference on the affordable housing board, that those of us who had questions, which I took to mean me and you, should come to one of their meetings, seemed to indicate the lack of interest in coming to address the issue before this board. So I'm not quite sure, frankly, how I feel about that at the moment. You know--
Tomorrow night, we have a CPC meeting to vote on--
On that?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you like, I can get ahold of her, and if you have any questions, I can relay them to her.
Yeah, I just don't understand why, coming and just describing to the boards so the broader public can hear what the parameters of the program are.
Yeah, also--
It's such a problem.
Yeah, we have, it's a situation, we do get last crack at that, it's a problem.
Before it goes on.
Oh, I know we do. I know we do. And I guess, you know, it just, I was a little perplexed at the unwillingness to just come in, because the only request in front of them is come and tell us what, how you're going to do the program. We're not, we didn't ask to go backwards and rehash history.
Well, she's presented it to the CPC.
Right, but she doesn't want to come here.
Right, but on the, like, to John's point, you do have the last crack, and when I was on CPC, when I sat there, it was not whether I thought, it was not my opinion, but whether I thought it should be presented to the residents of the town.
Right.
And it was their decision, and the Selectmen had the--
That's our choice.
--option at the end--
Right.
To put it on the, so it's different position.
Now, how did you feel, being a Selectman, saying--
I don't think we want to get into this. It's not on the agenda.
It was a curious piece of correspondence, that's the only reason I brought it up.
It's not on the agenda for the topic of discussion, so. Carol, do you have anything for liaison?
Yes, I do. First of all, I would like to thank the Mashpee Pops for presenting a beautiful rotary for the holidays. Thank you. You did a beautiful job.
Fantastic.
And second of all, we have our Mashpee Parade this Saturday night. That's it.
I have nothing.
Just on waterways, the Popanesset Bay inside channel dredging is taking place now. Dredge has been out there for a little while, they had some hiccups and some equipment problems that required some fabrication of new pipes and pumps and the like that delayed it, so they've been out there working. The county dredge, that is, it'll be back in February.
They going to be able to stay in their time prime?
I don't know. Oh, you mean within the window that they're allowed? I think they'll be able to stay in the window they're allowed. You know, we'll see whether they lost time, and that's going to push other jobs back and cause us problems, and Water Waste Committee is working very hard on getting the comprehensive permit that the town needs to be able to maintain the outside channel through the Army Corps of Engineers permitting process. So we're hoping that that's all done. That's a bigger, inaction by the Army Corps is a bigger threat.
Isn't it a relocation of the channel, actually?
It moves around a little bit. It falls within the historical parameters. You know, they found, when they went out and did the survey inside, that there was more sand that had built up volume than they had anticipated, so the job got a little bigger, so they're out there more. But the Army Corps of Engineers, is a, the timing of that's a bigger threat than the Fisheries and Wildlife window closing in February. So I'll keep the board posted on that, obviously. If we don't get that channel dredge before the season begins, it's a problem for voters.
I do have one more thing I'd be remiss, I forgot, is I had the pleasure, along with Carol was there, this past Saturday night, another tradition began in Mashpee, the Christmas tree lighting, town tree. For a first time, which usually is very sparsy or not, there was well over 200 people and mostly kids. The school coral group did a magnificent job, and Santa Claus, who we all know very well around in this town, did an unbelievably job.
Yes, it was very well attended.
Yep. With that, if there's nothing else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Thank you to Santa again.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's nice of Santa to adjourn.